Turned on the mics is what I did. One of those mornings, you know, it's like, ah. It's been stressful. Still loading? Want me to say testing? Yep.
Shocked at how short, I always split that. Shocked how short the list is this year.
But in how long the years are.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot.
Even the first listen.
Usually we're hitting the half.
Yeah.
At the end of this.
Both of them.
And they have all the.
You're just saying.
Stressing out.
My way, Phil. All the lessons of campus. I'm sorry I didn't get into her sooner. She was hoping to get before Friday, but I just didn't get her.
That's fine. We had. Big challenge. It's like, yeah.
As far as showing us.
As far as showing.
Knew it was coming.
Okay, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meetings. Please join me in the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. We'll take up Board of Supervisors matters. We're saying Supervisor Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of events that I wanted to go over that are upcoming and important here in Tulare County or in Tulare. On Thursday, April 28th, at 3:30 PM in Farmersville, there will be a dedication of a children's bench at the Farmersville Museum White Church on Farmersville Boulevard. That actually is a bench dedication that is going to commemorate the death of a Farmersville child through child abuse. And as you know, April is Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And it's definitely going to be a moving ceremony as her family will be there. But sure, give kudos to Farmersville for standing up and recognizing how important child abuse prevention is in our society. Also, on Friday, Buckman Mitchell, a local company, will be celebrating 100 years of operation in and around the Visalia-Tulare County area. So congratulations to them. And then lastly, on Saturday, Early Mart is going to be having a momentous occasion, and that is the grand opening of the McDonald's in that community. And that, it's very much a joy for the residents. And actually included in the press release for the event was compliments to the residents for bringing cookies and food and fruit and drinks to all the construction workers while they were working on the project. The residents were so excited to have the McDonald's. So it's going to be really neat to have that open in that community and look forward to it. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Cox?
Well, last week, Thursday evening, I attended the Visalia Chamber Member Appreciation Event. It was held in the courtyard at the Visalia Convention Center. Friday, I did participate in the Veterans Suicide Awareness Walk. There was about 100 people that showed up at the memorial building in downtown Visalia and walked out to the World War II wall in front of the works. Saturday, I participated in the Just Serve Day that was put on by our church. I helped mow a lawn for an elderly couple who were not able to do that for themselves. Had a great event. I think some 300 to 400 people showed out and did service throughout the community. Sunday, I attended the Mooney Grove Main Street opening. Great event. It was nice to walking through some of those buildings that have been cleaned up. And I am totally amazed at how good that museum is looking. They've gone through many, if not all, of the exhibits, cleaned them up, straightened them up. You can actually, the lighting is well done. You can see the exhibits in there. So it was a great opportunity to see how that portion of the park has been cleaned up. I want to thank everyone who participated in that. That was a great event. This Wednesday, I have a retirement board meeting in the morning. Thursday, we have a First Five Commission meeting at 10 o'clock here in these chambers. And then Monday evening, we have the awards ceremony for the challenge event that's been taking place. We have, I believe, nearly 20 schools participated, junior high schools and high schools throughout the county. And Monday evening, the LJ Williams Theater, we will honor those students that participated. And we'll be also issuing the awards for the best programs. So I invite everyone to come. It'll be a great time. We are able to honor our young people who are learning how to give back to this community. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Wednesday, I drove up to Heartland Christian Camp, which is up in the very northeastern part of Tulare County. It's a very active camp there. They go year round. They've been aggressively dealing with the tree mortality issue. Cal Fire has been up there working on a project, which was the re-establishment or protection of an existing fuel break. And it was, I went on a tour of what was being done and very, very effective. But again, another one of those situations where you're just absolutely shocked, the number of dead trees, even trees that were spaced up there from the previous fire fuel break creation were dead. I mean, if you're on top of a ridge, that's the first place that dries out. So the trees on top were dead. As you move down the sides, you have a few more trees that survive. But again, the tree mortality issue continues to be a major problem. But it was worthwhile also going up there because their fuel break only extended, of course, to their property. And then beyond that was another fuel break that had been created by the Forest Service many years ago. But it too is in need of now the work to make it effective. Because over time, things grow, brush grows back in, trees die, and that sort of thing. So it's another example of how we can look to work together between various agencies to try to do something meaningful. We've got so many dead trees up there. Honestly, if we're able to affect 5% or 10% of the trees that are up there in terms of treatment, we'll probably be fortunate. But we need to be very selective and strategic about how we do that to make sure that we're doing what's right. The other thing was article in the Fresno Bee this last week talking about the fire, the rough fire that occurred in Fresno and Tulare Counties. And in that situation, the fire did go through some existing groves, I think Converse Basin Grove particularly. And they talked about a thousand-year-old tree being dead because of the fire. There was a spin on the story, which was new growth, new life, you know, new trees are coming up. Well, that's fine. But here was a tree that has survived for a millennium, has survived droughts like we've had this last year, probably 10 times, survived fires probably many times, maybe hundreds of times. It didn't survive this fire. And so it makes me all the more anxious to push the Forest Service to manage the redwood monument the way it needs to be managed. Because they have a lot of dead trees around redwood groves, and if they're not managed, those groves are in peril. And that's what they're there to do, is to manage this property to protect the growth. So I guess you can tell I get a little bit passionate about that. But it bothers me, and I hope it bothers you as well. This, the coming week, we have many things happening on Thursday, it seems. Up at Squaw Valley, which is in Fresno County, but it affects us, is the designation of 180th Ascenic Highway. And so I want to try to get up there to that event. Then in the afternoon, we have a groundbreaking at North Visalia, where one of our projects was to extend the water services, Cal Water Services, into an area in the county that many of their wells have gone dry. We got federal or state funding to put the water line in. The problem was that they would not pay for the size of the pipe needed to provide water protection, you know, fire protection. And that was needed before Cal Fire could actually accept it. And so a lot of, many local Rotary Clubs stepped up and provided funding and sought a grant from the Rotary Foundation and came up with the money to pay for that extra cost to put in the hydrants, to put in the larger pipe. And so there's going to be a groundbreaking ceremony, which I will be attending at 2 o'clock. And then at 3 o'clock, in Traver, Dammie Healthcare Network is going to have the grand opening of their new clinic, which is a clinic co-located on the public school in Traver. Another one of those great type of projects, thanks to RMA for their assistance in making this happen. And the funding that was made available, the opportunity to co-locate with the school gave it additional points and so forth to make it worthwhile. So very happy about that happening. So just a very busy time, and that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Sheeda?
Last Wednesday, I traveled to Willows, California, representing the board on the Real Counties Representatives of California, acronyms RCRC. And RCRC is made up of 35 counties. And we have a supervisor from each county that sits on the board. The reason we went to Glen County is that's the home of the chairman. And every year, we have, we go to the chairman's county for an annual conference. Glen, Willows, California, I'm sure most of you do not know where Willows, California is. Is southwest of Chico, off of I-5. And surprisingly, it's basically rice country. There's a lot of trees being grown now. But what was amazing is Willows has a racetrack. And that's where we met, was at the Thunder Hill Racetrack. And what they do on this racetrack, the operators, they don't run races like on a circuit. They have people come in that bring their groups in, like the Porsche Club, or the Corvette Club, or some car club, and they rent the track for their members. So it's quite a unique operation that's been going off for about 15 years. The main topic of our conversation was obviously tree mortality. Almost all 35 of our counties have substantial problems. But the core of the problem is basically from Tooleme County south to Kern County. And we're waiting for the results of the Forest Service flyover, the USDA flyover.
Which has been delayed again until June.
It's been delayed?
Yeah.
Okay. We were told that we're supposed to fly over on the 15th of the month when we are in DC. Now it's been delayed to June. And as they delay it, I think they're going to find more and more trees than they would have found in April. So that's what I did on Wednesday and Thursday, and that's all I have.
We talked about our meeting yesterday on the.
Oh. Excuse me. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the proposed GSAs, the groundwater management groups from the eastern part of our county, the Greater Cuaia and the Cuaia. So we have three potential GSA groups in the Cuaia drainage area. And we had a great conversation. I think it's coming down to the fact that the county is responsible for areas, they're called white areas, that do not receive water from irrigation districts. And we're going to have to make a decision on where the dividing line is going to be between these different groundwater management agencies. So we're going to have a workshop coming up next month. And we're going to discuss what the county needs to do and what the groundwater management groups want us to do. So that's coming forward. And there will be a meeting, I believe, the day before, by the 3, on the 24th. All three groups will get together with growers who are in these areas and try to determine, basically, the main issue we have is boundaries to these districts. So hopefully, we'll have that kind of on the way by the end of next month. Do you have anything to add Supervisor?
I forgot to mention this.
Okay, thank you. I always look at the computer every morning and check out Lake Success. This morning, it had 45,276 acre feet in it, which is outstanding. It's going to improve our groundwater situation on the east side out there as we continue to hold that water. And with the Friant Water Users now up to 50% of their allocation. Is it up to 60 now? Okay, great. It's up to 60. We'll be able to use that water for the farming industry and keep that water in Lake Success till later on in the year. So it'll improve not only the water situation for the area, but recreation for the area too. Thursday, I'll be meeting with the Porterville Chamber of Commerce Legislative Committee and speaking to them on Tulare County's economic development and where we've been and where we're headed with that, which helps everybody. Friday, we have our San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority meeting at 9 o'clock in Visalia over here. And we'll be taking up some items on that that are very crucial to the future and success of that venture. And what I'd also like to do is announce at this time, once again, Tulare County is giving employees an opportunity this Wednesday, April 27th, to wear jeans in recognition of Denim Day. Denim Day is a national campaign held every April in honor of Sexual Violence Awareness Month. Denim Day is a worldwide event in which people are encouraged to wear jeans and show a strong visual support for victims of sexual assault. Tulare County joins other participating organizations, including Family Services of Tulare County, Tulare County Office of Education, Buckman Mitchell, and Suncrest Bank. We encourage all Tulare County residents and employees to consider wearing jeans on Wednesday in support of Denim Day to promote the understanding and education regarding the prevention of sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence. That concludes my Supervisor Matters.
Mr. Chair, I don't know that that's going to apply to our Sheriff's Department and to.
It's a voluntary. Voluntary. But we just want people to know they can do that from the county. Okay, let's move on to item number two. Presentation of proclamation to adopt the month of May 2016 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Tulare County. And Supervisor Pete Vanderpool will be presenting that proclamation.
Thank you. And as many of you know who have ever dealt with a retired doctor, they're very precise and want things a very certain way. So Dr. Nelson has asked to be able to present first, and then I will present the proclamation to him. So I will call upon a longtime mental health board member and retired doctor, Ralph Nelson.
Good morning Supervisors, Mr. Sims and Mr. Spata. My name is Ralph Nelson, and I'm as Chair of the Tulare County Mental Health Board. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for issuing the proclamation for May as Mental Health Month. Mental health organizations throughout America, for many years, have built a national focus during May on crucial mental health issues. The goal of the Mental Health Awareness Month is to raise awareness and educate the public about the realities of mental illness, mental health, and the possibility of wellness and recovery for those people with mental illnesses. Indeed, mental health of our community is the utmost importance, since mental illness, and especially depression, causes more lost workdays and productivity in the workforce than any other disease or disorder. One in five individuals will experience some type of mental disorder every year. One in 17 persons will develop a serious mental illness, such as schizophrenia, schizoaffective disorder, major depression, or bipolar disorder during their lifetime. Of those developing a serious mental illness, 75% will do so before the age of 25. With these statistics, early intervention should be our top priority to decrease the resulting severe disability of mental illness in these individuals developing mental illness. Okay. These individuals will be helped when they develop their mental illness, but will also save tremendous amounts of resources for the community mental health system in Tulare County. Mental illnesses cross all boundaries of age, race, gender, and ethnicity. It is estimated that only 20% of children suffering from mental illness receive mental health services, resulting in 50% to 75% of youth in juvenile justice facilities having a diagnosable mental health disorder. 16% of adults in jails and prisons have a serious mental illness, with the Department of Justice issuing a report several years ago stating that up to 75% of prison population has a mental health disorder that needs treatment. Since deinstitutionalization in the 1960s, individuals with severe mental illness were moved from hospitals to community care without proper funding, resulting in their becoming homeless, living in shelters, and ending up in jails and prisons. This is an unacceptable result for America and for California. In 2004, Proposition 63 was passed and the Mental Health Services Act became law. The act places a 1% surtax on personal annual income over $1 million, resulting in funding of services for individuals with mental illness between $1.3 and $1.6 billion a year for the past several years. The implementation of the act began the transformation of the California mental health system from employing a medical model to a model of recovery, resiliency, and wellness, utilizing a whatever-it-takes approach. It provides services that work most of the time. The Tulare County Department of Mental Health has spent funds from the Mental Health Services Act to fund services for people with serious mental illness, utilizing full-service partnerships, including people with mental illness from underserved and unserved populations throughout the county, including the rural areas where mobile vans are used to deliver services, as well as a transitional age youth program, which includes housing. The act also funds the Mental Health Court Program, the Suicide Prevention Task Force, as well as many other programs, such as postpartum depression screening, senior depression screening, early-grade school interventions, and early diagnosis and treatment of mental illness to prevent disability. An electronic medical record has been funded, and implementation is ongoing. Lastly, permanent supportive housing has been built in Visalia and contracted for in Tulare and Porterville that will provide shelter for individuals with serious mental illness. As most of you know, appropriate treatment leading to recovery, resiliency, and wellness cannot be successful without appropriate housing. Mental illnesses are common, and treatment for people with mental illnesses is available. There are a variety of treatment options, and often it takes some time for a person to find the right treatment that works for them. But when they do, the results can be life-changing and truly amazing. There are a number of events that are planned to celebrate Mental Health Awareness Month. A picnic organized by individuals in recovery. A month-long art show at the My Voice Media Center exhibiting expressions of lived experience, starting with a reception on Friday, May 6th, at 5:30 PM. Children art shows and open houses hosted in Spanish at several family resource centers throughout Tulare County. And continued collaboration with the Visalia Rawhide to celebrate the Mental Health Awareness Month at their baseball game on May 13th. The Visalia Rawhide designed their players' home jersey using the colors of turquoise and silver for that night's celebration, because these were the colors that were designated by the Tulare County Mental Health Wellness and Recovery Champions to represent Mental Health Awareness Month. The Mental Health Board thanks the Health and Human Services Agency and the Board of Supervisors for supporting efforts to provide appropriate mental health services and housing for our most vulnerable citizens, those who have a serious mental illness. Thank you.
You're not supposed to sit down, Dr. Nelson. You have to join me up here. But if you thought Dr. Nelson's talk was long, get ready. Mine's even longer. I'm kidding. I really do have to say that I appreciate what Dr. Nelson said this morning. And I really hope that everyone had a chance to truly listen. Because I think that mental health disorders really are the most overlooked public health issue that our country has. And the more that we bring awareness to mental health disorders, and really do take on the motto that the Tulare County Mental Health Department and Mental Health Board has taken in that recovery and wellness are both possible when mental health disorders are properly diagnosed and treated. It would be a win for us all. And so I really do appreciate the work that our Mental Health Department does, that our Mental Health Board does, and that all of our consumers do in Tulare County to help their peers and become a part of the solution. I do think that if we all work together, we can help make this world a better place and really help address some of the issues that are so often overlooked in our society. So with that, it is my pleasure to present this proclamation declaring May of 2016 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Tulare County. I know there's a variety of events and efforts being undertaken to make sure that the message is spread. So I give kudos to those who are spreading the word, and I hope that everyone else out there will listen. So thank you very much, Dr. Nelson, and all of the peers for all the work you do.
You know, I met Dr. Nelson 12 years ago when I served on the Tulare County Mental Health Board. And I want to thank you for your service. But there's something that's come up recently that Speaker Anthony Rendon made a statement about directing more attention toward mental health issues. And anything we can do as Board of Supervisors to support that initiative, please let us know.
I think we've made great strides, I know now. We have people that evaluate each one of our prisoners, our people that's taken into custody before they're confined to confinement. So I think Tulare County is on board with this, and anything we can do. We're trying to open a new mental health facility in Porterville right now. So we're on board with this thing. So we're with you. Thank you.
And I believe this is an action item, Mr. Chairman. I would gladly move approval.
Okay. Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Worley. Cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you. Okay, item number three has been moved to consent calendar, because I will be presenting that proclamation on May 6th in Mooney Grove on Senior Day in the park. So we're going to move that to consent calendar. So with that, we will move on to item number four, Service Awards Presentations.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Ennis and members of the board, CAO Mike Spata, and Councilwoman Clint Sims, and to all of our employees and public in our audience. I happen to love my job, but some days I love it even more. And this happens to be one of those days of the year when I get to join with the Supervisors in honoring and participating in the Service Award Ceremony. Today, our Service Award Program recognizes employees who are completing 10 or more years of continuous service during the prior calendar year. Awards for employees who have completed 10 years of service will be presented in the employees' departments. There are 179 who are receiving 10-year service awards this year. We honor over 273. We honor over two hundred and seventy-three employees this year for their loyalty, hard work, compassion, and service ethic they provide to their departments and the citizens of Tulare County. Two hundred and seventy-three are over fifteen years of service this year. As I read a little bit about our workers, employees today, you will hear that many of them are also what I call good Samaritans and humanitarians in other areas of their lives, and they volunteer in their communities, for their church, in school activities, and service clubs. Many have also developed special talents and hobbies that you will also hear of today. However, some of our employees are a little bit shy about telling us about themselves, so those we will honor their request by simply reading their name and years of service. Today, a total of thirty-seven awards will be presented to employees. We also have employees who chose not to come to the Board to receive their award. Employees, as your name is called, please come forward to receive your award. Some of you have large awards, such as these beautiful clocks here that have big boxes, so if you will stop and get your box before you return to your seat, or at the break, come forward and get your box. So we'll begin with District One Supervisor Alan Ashida, and our first recipient is Engelbert Engelbert has fifteen years of service with the Resource Management Agency and is an Assistant Road Superintendent. His hobbies are camping, fishing, and going to the coast. He says he is a proud father and husband, and his supervisor says Gilbert is a conscientious employee and steps up to meet all challenges. Sergeant Larry Camacho. Larry has fifteen years of service. Chuck Presbilski, and I apologize if I didn't get the name correct, fifteen years of service as a Planner Three with Resource Management Agency. Chuck graduated with a degree in geography from Fresno State, and he's currently enrolled in the Masters of Public Administration Program. His hobby and interest is ice hockey. Roseanne Bean. Roseanne has twenty years of service with the Sheriff's Department as a Sheriff's Records Clerk. She is retired. She enjoys antiquing and now spending a lot of time with her only five-year-old granddaughter. Congratulations. Captain Larry McCary. Twenty years of service with the Sheriff's Department. Larry is a longtime employee of the Sheriff's Department, but also he previously worked in other police capacities. He has a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice management and enjoys camping and fishing. Glenn Black. Glenn has twenty-five years of service and is a heavy equipment mechanic too with Solid Waste Department. He was a little shy, but his supervisor, Ron Moore, says Glenn is a very dedicated, hard-working person and one of the best mechanics I have ever had to work with. Congratulations. Deputy Brian Tennant with our Sheriff's Department, thirty years of service. Deputy Tennant was employed by the Tulare County Marshal's Office for approximately twelve years prior to consolidation with the Sheriff's Department. He enjoys shooting and golfing. He's also currently sitting on the Board of Directors of the PORAC Association. Rex Thulyn. Thirty-five years of service, construction and maintenance worker three in the Porterville Road Yard with our Resource Management Agency. He joined the Army and then came to RMA. Congratulations. Okay, that does it for District One today. District Two Supervisor Pete Vanderpool will present awards, and we'll begin with Lorena Torres. Lorena has fifteen years of service as a probation correctional officer with our probation department. She has been the Employee of the Quarter several times. She enjoys traveling and scrapbooking. And her supervisor, Amanda Lemoine, says Officer Lorena Torres is a hard worker. She continually aids our facility by signing up for overtime shifts. Officer Torres is creative in her directed activities, and she completes with youth. Thank you. Edna Blackhurst. Twenty years of service with Cooperative Extension. She is currently a Secretary Three, and she says she will retire from UC Co-op at some point. She received employee recognition in two thousand and one and also in two thousand and six. She has been recognized by the State of California Assembly for her service to Cooperative Extension, and she is a retired cake decorator. Mona Sosido, Sosida. Thirty years of service. She is an Account Clerk with Health and Human Services Agency. Of note, she says she has three grandchildren, two grandsons, and one princess. Her supervisor Dana Allen says of her she is a joy to work with and has a positive attitude with everyone she works with. Congratulations. Sherry Franco. Sherry has thirty-five years of service as a Legal Office Assistant Four with our Child Services Department. She enjoys gardening, sewing, and quilting, and is the proud grandmother of nine. District Three Supervisor Phil Cox will present, and we'll begin with Carrie Ostai. Carrie has fifteen years of service. She's a Sheriff's Deputy Two, so we'll get her a word to her. Oh, I'm sorry, Carl, not Carrie. Is Carl here? Right, Denise Damari. Damari, fifteen years of service, Detention Services Officer in Sheriff's Department. In addition to working for Tulare County, Denise volunteers for the Boy Scouts and has run a day camp. And as Director of that, she also serves on the PTA Board. She's celebrated sixteen years of marriage and has a ten-year-old boy named Titus. Congratulations. Leslie Davis. Fifteen years of service. Leslie is a Fiscal Manager with the Tulare County Association of Governments. She began as an accountant for Resource Management Agency, then left there for Human Resources, and then we lost her to TCAG as a Fiscal Manager when she promoted. She has an Associate's and Bachelor's Degree and a Master's in Education. Congratulations. Mike Santos. Mike is a supervising probation officer with fifteen years of service. He is also a weapons defense instructor, range master, simulations instructor, and court-certified gang expert. He has been the 2012 Probation Officer of the Year and has also earned the Chief's Award. Congratulations. Jimmy Yamakawa. Jimmy is retired recently, has fifteen years of service with Tulare County, and was an Engineer Three with Resource Management Agency. While employed with Tulare County, Jimmy received the Employee Recognition Award in December of 2015. He received a Project of the Year Award for Small Communities that same year. He served on the leadership class, the initial leadership class, and his hobbies include biking to work for the past five years, and he is also an instructor in Tai Chi and has practiced that for over thirty years. Congratulations. The next recipient is Michelle Baldwin with twenty years of service. She is our Chief Clerk for the Board of Supervisors. Michelle has spent most of her career working in the CAO and Board Offices. She did have an opportunity to work for John Davis in Health and Human Services for about five years. She is a notary public. She's currently serving as the President of the California Clerk of the Boards Association. Hobbies, if anyone knows her, are shopping, reading, and spending time with family and Supervisor Worthley states, Michelle is a tigress when it comes to agenda, protocol, but she's the most lovable tigress, and I know it is my great pleasure to call her my coworker and my friend. Congratulations. Teresa Godwin. Twenty years of service as a probation correctional officer two. She's currently working at the Juvenile Detention Facility and is assigned to Juvenile Transport. She has been the Employee of the Year and Employee of the Quarter, enjoys reading and sewing, and spending time with her grandchildren on vacations. Congratulations. Christine Lipscomb. Christine has twenty years of service as an Accountant One in the Fiscal Unit of the Sheriff's Department. She worked for Health and Human Services for eighteen years, and five years, five years of that as a Senior Account Clerk, thirteen years as a Patient Account Rep. She was then promoted to an Accountant One in the Sheriff's Department. Traveling with her husband, rescuing feral cats, genealogy, and scrapbooking are her hobbies, as well as playing the piano and flute. Congratulations. Anthony Rodriguez. Anthony is a Sheriff's Deputy with the Sheriff's Department in Orozco and has twenty years of service. He is a Golden West High School graduate. He graduated and served in the U.S. Marines, went to COS Police Academy. In 2012, received the Sheriff Commendation for Canine Apprehension with three felony suspects. Hobbies are camping, woodworking, and remodeling. Congratulations. Wendy Schilling. Wendy has twenty years of service as a Senior Account Clerk at the Child Services Department. She has worked for the Municipal Court, worked for probation, and now with child support. She enjoys hiking, camping, crafting, painting, sewing, has been a Girl Scout volunteer for ten years with her two daughters who are eight and fifteen. Congratulations. And Wendy was joined with Supervisor Phil Cox with our county auditor and mother today. Thank you. Kathleen Taylor has twenty years of service as a Deputy County Counsel. She has an AB from UC Berkeley and her law degree from Hastings College of Law. Congratulations, Kathleen. Bill Kelly. Bill is a supervising probation officer with twenty-five years of service. He's currently with the Porterville Branch Office. He has been a range instructor and a simulations instructor. He was Probation Officer of the Year in 2011, enjoys tennis, golf, working out, and the ocean. Congratulations. Melody Crank. Melody has twenty-five years of service and is currently a supervising probation officer. She did work for Health and Human Services for four years prior to joining probation. She is expecting her fourth grandchild in the next couple of months, and she enjoys hanging out with the grandkids. Retiree Carol Laird. Carol was a Deputy County Counsel for twenty-five years with the county, served as an attorney for the school districts of the county. Since retiring four months ago, she's finding more time for reading, exercising, Bible study, meditation, cooking, and enjoying family and friends. She is proof there is life after work. Congratulations. Judith Sanchez Duran. Judith has twenty-five years of service as a Milk Technician Three. She works for Health and Human Services at the Hillman Lab. She began as a lab assistant and promoted up to Milk Technician. She has been Employee of the Month Award, she's got those twice, and a Laboratorian of the Year Award. She plays tennis, gardens, bakes, walks, and enjoys taking care of her girls. Congratulations. Lisa Strongen. Lisa has twenty-five years of service as a Supervising Attorney and is currently in the Public Defender's Office. She also worked for Health and Human Services as a sole attorney for Aging Services. She returned the Public Defender's Office in 2004. She enjoys music, photography, writing, and travel. Says of her supervisor, Lisa is a veteran trial attorney who routinely handles the most complex cases that the office has to offer. Lisa supervises the Misdemeanor Unit, which under her direction has consistently returned not guilty verdicts. Congratulations. Captain Tim Fosno. Captain Tim was recently promoted in a lovely ceremony this last month. He has thirty years of service with the Sheriff's Department. Congratulations. Retiree Harold Wood. Harold has thirty years of service with Tulare County as a Chief Deputy County Counsel, and he was a little bit shy about providing any other additional information. That concludes District Three. District Four Supervisor Worthley will present, and we'll begin with Greg Fritz. Greg has fifteen years of service as a Traffic Control Supervisor in Sign Maintenance with Resource Management Agency. His supervisor, Amy Farrell, states Greg has been an asset to the County of Tulare since the day of his hire. He's hardworking, diligent, and honest. Congratulations. Rosemary Reese. Rosemary has fifteen years of service with Tulare County as in the Child Support Officer II. The most important awards, she states, are from her workers, who say thank you when you've assisted them. She enjoys reading, crafts, flower arrangements, gardening, and her prayer group. Congratulations, Rosemary. Retiree Frank Shmentey. Frank has twenty years of service with Tulare County as a Heavy Equipment Mechanic II. During his employment, he attended our Supervisory Academy. His hobbies and interests include drag racing, working on and building classic cars, camping, hunting, and fishing. His daughter is attending the dental program at Reedley College, and his son is currently graduating from Reedley College with an AA Degree in Business Management. Congratulations. Rebecca Weber. Rebecca has twenty years of service with the Child Services Department and is an Administrative Aid. She's also been a Recruiter Assistant in that department, and in that capacity, she has worked with the Human Resources Department on recruitments. She has received awards from the Department of Child Services, including Customer Service Awards in 2003, an Employee Recognition in 2005 and 2006. Congratulations, Rebecca. Sandra Bernitsky. Training Officer II with twenty-five years of service at Child Support Services Department. Sandra enjoys travel, travel, travel. She is the proud grandmother of three wonderful babies. Congratulations, Sandra. And finally, District Five Supervisor and Chairman Mike Ennis will present. We'll begin with Humberto Taveras. Humberto has fifteen years of service and is currently a Construction and Maintenance Worker IV at the Terabella Road Yard. He's also a Heavy Equipment Operator. He has attended and graduated from Supervisor Academy, enjoys going camping, and it's very important for me to state that he loves his job. Congratulations. George Luna. George has twenty years of service for Tulare County and is a Supervising Probation Officer in the Porterville Branch. He received his Bachelors in Criminology from California State Fresno. He was the 2001 Latino Peace Officer of the Year Award recipient, and he has been the Employee of the Quarter. He's been married for twenty-three years to Connie and has two daughters. Congratulations, George. Supervisors, that concludes our formal ceremony today. We'll be back next Tuesday with additional awards for our employees. I would like to recognize Judy Weens, our Department Coordinator, who puts us together each year for our service awards.
Mr. Chair, just want to make a few comments. First of all, I just want to say thank you to our employees. Those of you who are recognized today have served the county for a long period of time, and it's very clear, even those that didn't specifically make sure that it was said in their comments, you all love your jobs. And it really is wonderful to know that the county provides that kind of an opportunity. And really, Tulare County is its people. This government exists and functions because we provide services. We are constituents of this county, and we provide services to people who are also constituents in this county and may not work for the county. It's great to learn a little bit about each of our employees and find out what's something special that you enjoy doing. It's always interesting to hear all the sheriffs enjoy shooting. I think they chose careers that are perfect for them. And, you know, all the other things that make you complete outside of work. It's really neat to hear about that, whether it's family, hobbies, et cetera. But your service is greatly appreciated, and I hope that for all of you, even those that receive thirty-five-year awards, you have many more years to give, because you are all the reason why Tulare County is great. So, thank you.
Supervisor Cox?
Well, I did my adding again. I'm including the hundred and seventy-nine that got ten years, two thousand five hundred and ninety years of service. That's, that's, that's pretty awesome. I have one observation to make. You folks look great. I'm looking at the people who came up with fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years of service. One, one sweet lady whispered to I, said she didn't look old enough to have grandchildren, because that was one of the things that was mentioned, she loves her grandchildren. She goes, I have ten. Well, you look great for having ten grandchildren. And I am so proud to be a part of this organization with people that are as dedicated to the citizens of this county as you are. So, thank you for allowing me to be a part of this ceremony today. It was great.
This is always one of my favorite days, the Board of Supervisors, and it's good because the other two I always cry at, so this is a good one because I don't cry. But I do appreciate when people tell something about themselves. It's always nice to hear about your other interests besides working for Tulare County. You know, I have often said over the years that we are only as good as our employees, and I truly mean that, but I'm sure that I'm the only one that does this, but my driving into work and I have enough time to have some conversations with myself, I know nobody else who does that. I was just thinking about that, and, you know, what is it that makes Tulare County unique? What is it about Tulare County that stands out when you compare us to many other governmental agencies? It's our employees, but it's also our team. And as I think about that, you are the players, you are the employees. We are responsible for setting the policy, setting the vision for the county, and it's that combination that really makes Tulare County unique. It's what allows us to be able to pay competitive wages. It allows us to provide you, hopefully, with good working conditions and appropriate tools to do your job and the training to do your jobs. I want to thank each one of you for your leadership, and you might not think of yourselves as leaders just because you've been serving for a number of years, but believe me, you are leaders, each and every one of you, because you set the tone, you set the standard. As new people come to work for the county, they look to you. What does it mean to come to work every day? What does it mean to provide services to the public? And so, I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank you for being a part of the Tulare County team. I just feel really good about the future for Tulare County, and you are what makes me feel really good about it. Thank you.
Supervisor Sheed?
An observation that I've made today compared to twelve years ago or ten years ago is that there are a lot fewer of you out there that have the same color hair that I have. We have gone through quite a transformation in Tulare County with our employees, with the baby boomers retiring out. And as Supervisor Cox has mentioned, you guys look a lot more youthful than what it used to be. I think the other thing that's changed, I think we've had a cultural change in our employees over the last twelve years, and I see more cooperation between agencies and more pride in the work that you're doing. And I'm really proud to say that this is my last year as a county supervisor, but I can look at our county the way it's run by you and the devotion that you give to your job, that I don't think there's a finer-run county in the state of California, and that's because of all of you. So, thank you very much for your service, and I hope you have many, many more years.
Well, thank you, guys, for saying everything that could be said. But you know how I look at it. I come out of the business world, and a business is only as good as the people that represent that business, and you're the people that represent this business every day. It's up to the county to give the services, whether it be the sheriff, public defender, Resource Management, RMA. We're the people that people go to when they need something done. You, the workers, everybody that works within the county, you are the face of this county, and you are the people that people interact with. So, thank you so much for what you do every day. I don't get very many complaints anymore from anybody in any of our different agencies. So, what a great deal. I mean, what a great group of people we have, and thank you for all your service. We appreciate it, and we'll continue to give you the support as well as you supporting the county. Thank you so much. With that, let's give them a standing ovation.
Okay, we'll take just a couple of minutes for the people that... Michelle?
Want to exit?
It's your car.
Did you distribute a PowerPoint? It's not up here. It's not up here. Maybe we should talk to Michelle when she comes back.
Well, it'll fit, right?
Okay, well, we're back in session again. Congratulations to all the recipients. Thank you so much for your efforts. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Anybody wishing to approach the board on matters concerning the board but not on the agenda may do so at this time. Allison?
Actually, I'd like to share some information, supervisors. As I shared with you earlier, I believe it was last week, Step Up will be partnering with the Rawhide Baseball Team and MLB, along with Proteus and the Whitman Center, to select fifty youth twelve and under, twenty-five girls and twenty-five boys, to participate in the Keep On Playing Program. So, it will start, it will be launching tomorrow night at a Rawhide game at six o'clock. You can join us. And then, we'll be running the duration of the summer and end in August. The kids will have the opportunity to learn baseball on the baseball field at Rawhide Stadium, and they will receive lessons from players as well as coaches. So, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and we hope that if it's successful, we'll be able to bring onboard kids from other areas in our county. So, we're really excited about that. So, I wanted to let you know. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to approach the board on public comment? Signal one, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the board. We will go move to Consent Calendar. Item number thirty-three will be pulled for separate consideration, and then item three will be added to the consent calendar. Any other items that need to be pulled or...
Move approval to balance the consent calendar.
Moved by Supervisor Worthley, second by Supervisor Randerpool. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Okay, item thirty-three. Federal Transit Act Grant Application to Caltrans for $220,000.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors, County Counsel, and Mr. CIO. So, requested that this item be pulled from the consent calendar and considered separately so that we could add a request to it. All of you have the new agenda item that has been placed. been placed before you earlier this morning. The new request would be to authorize the chairman to sign the Section 5333B documentation and agreement by subrecipient to terms and conditions of the special sections 5333B warranty. This was, this document was already included in the agenda package. It just after the agenda went out, there arose a question as to whether or not the chairman was authorized to sign this based on the way the resolution had been worded previously. And further in support of this, we added an appendix to this, which is the full warranty that was discussed. And that's basically it, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Motion approved.
Moved by Supervisor Cox?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wordley. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one small thing. Madam Clerk, on the item 12, Chris Kapheim's name was misspelled. I'm sure it's okay and everything else, but it's got, it's no, there's no M. It's K-A-P-H-E-I-M.
Okay.
Okay, let's move to item number six. Public hearing to consider the changes to the fee schedule for the Tulare County Ag Commissioner. Marilyn.
Thank you, Chairman Ennis. Good morning, everyone. In preparation for today's hearing, we notified all of our industry groups. I have a pretty extensive email group of them. We also sent out 200 postcards and received 14 responses, and then various postings on our webpage, Facebook, and the newspaper. Of the 14 requests, it was just for additional information about the fees and the ability to comment. Most of our fees are set by code or regulation, but in considering the fees for service, which we provide, this is the third year in the row that we've revisited these fees. Last year, our standard phytosanitary inspection fee was decreased by $2.18. This year, we're asking that that fee be brought up to $40 or an $8.75 increase. The high-intensity inspections that we do are for our work-planned commodities, like oranges or table grapes going to Australia, stone fruit to Mexico, the additional requirements for not only the grower in the packing shed, but also through our inspection work. So, that fee was increased last year by $10.57. We're asking that it be brought up $9.50 to $83 for this fiscal year. Our certificates of quarantine compliance were dropped $1 last year. This year, we're asking that that fee go up to $22. So, that's a $9.50 increase, which is pretty high. But what we plan on doing is revealing these fees annually. So, next year, based on our costs, we'll drop all three of them if the, if that warrants. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I appreciate the context of that, but I'm just sort of wondering if you have some sort of generic comment about why we would have gone, dropped them last year a small amount, and then had, from a percentage standpoint, pretty good-sized increases this year. Is there some kind of, I mean, we didn't give that kind of big pay raises last year, so I'm just curious what prompted the greater expense.
We did absorb a 3% for our clerical and our inspector pool, but in most part, Tulare County, because we're the number-one exporting county, we deal in volumes of, you know, coming to a packing shed and have a stack of phytosanitary documents. And so, that cuts down on our costs because we're not moving around. We're just staying in-house and doing those inspections. So, we had 750 fewer of those certificates for the CQC's last year. And it could have been, you know, losing a market or a state dropping its requirements for moving honeybees transiting through. You know, it's just really tough to know where the 750 came from.
Port strike, too.
Yep, port strike.
True.
Questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this matter may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Move approval.
Moved by Supervisor Sheed.
I'll second that.
Second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Supervisor Wordley is...
Oh, I'm sorry. I must have leaned on something there unexpectedly. There we go.
Okay, now the vote is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Wondered both ways.
Undecided.
I wondered both ways.
We're with caution.
Okay, let's move on to item number seven. Public hearing for adoption of a fee adjustments for Health and Human Services. Mr. Lutz?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Spada and Mr. Sims. Tim Lutz, Fiscal Operations Director for Health and Human Services, here this morning to present what will hopefully be a fairly brief fee presentation for the agency this year. Relatively speaking from prior years, our request is actually reasonably light, which is, which is nice, but there are a couple items that I want to make sure I provide some in-depth review for your consideration. The two areas or programs that we're looking to bring fee requests to this year is in our health operations, both in the public health clinics and the lab, and also through our environmental health program. Just a very brief background on the clinic system. We provide general practice, specialty, and pediatric services to residents of the county. The clinics, through a designation as a federally qualified health center look-alike, or FQHC, enable us to deliver these services in the most cost-effective means possible for both the county and our residents. And we're able to leverage federal-state revenue sources in addition to private and public insurance. Also, in regard to the public health lab, we provide testing services, really a critical support for our clinic systems and also the external customers for the lab. We, over the last couple years, we've seen significant changes in the fees coming out of our lab programs. A lot of that is due to the implementation of lean within the lab. Our lab manager, around two years ago, went through the entire training series, really started stressing lean culture, getting people onboard with how do we look at different ways to do business, eliminate waste, create efficiencies, provide much better value for the customers. I think year after year, we've seen that pay dividends off, and I'm excited when we get to that section to highlight some of those areas that we've really saved money, both to our end users, but also eliminated waste within the system. For a summary of our public health requests for the lab and clinics, we have 14 new fees, one fee increase, and four decreases. This first series, and I apologize for the, for the naming conventions on the fees. Unfortunately, we are tied to our billing codes that we use, so that uniformity also creates very long, cumbersome codes. So, rather than try and read through each of the items, I'll just provide in summary. These particular ones that you see up on the screen right now are all related to our clinic system. As you can see, a lot of them are procedures such as the stress test and the number of vaccinations. The first question I had was, well, don't we already do vaccines? Why are we doing more vaccines? But because of the difference of looking at whether it's intramuscular, whether it's nasal, the age, as we drill down and have implemented ICD-10, which is a new standard for our coding, we continue to have additional elements that we have to be reporting on to track minute differences between administering a vaccine to this person, this type of administration, et cetera. So, that's why you'll see a number of new fees that are really aimed at services that we've been providing, but this is just letting us bill in a little different way.
Like Cam, sure, for everyone's benefit, how many billing codes are there?
You know, I actually don't know. I'd be happy to find out, but there are hundreds of billing codes.
There are thousands.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we have a coding specialist whose job it is to literally go in, train our providers on, here's the new, here's the new codes, looking at the charging. This was coded a little incorrectly. It really needs to be this. When we hired that billing specialist a year and a half ago, that really was his, his initial sole task, and it definitely is a full-time job for him.
I understand it's in the 8,000 range of billing codes.
I believe it. Yes, but, and it is important, again, particularly under ICD-10, that we're really being accurate, because what that does is it prevents us from then having denials, resubmissions, it delays our billing. Our amount of denials has gone down significantly as a result of careful coding, making sure that we're really educating our providers on, these are the codes that you need to use under these circumstances. This next series is requests adding new fees for our lab. As I had previously mentioned, as we've gone through this lean effort within the lab, the staff really evaluate the services there through a couple of lenses. One is, how can we do things more cost-effectively? How can we reduce waste within the program? Process improvement organizational efficiencies? And another is, some things maybe we need to send out because we can't do it more cost-effective, and that's, we're doing that in some situations. Or others, are there things that we can be doing to add value to the clinic system that then helps us on the revenue side and also provides value to our customers? So, with that in mind, there are a number of new fees that they were asking for to try and address some of the new types of tests that we're doing, and again, conform with new billing standards to make sure that we get the maximum reimbursement possible. I would like to call out one area where, and it's the only area in the public health lab where we're actually asking to increase a fee. And as you can see from the number, it appears to be a very large increase in the fee because of the sheer percentage at 210%. The reason for this fee is, we used to be doing this type of a screening where we would have to, one, charge it twice. That's why you see the $30 with the asterisk, 15 times two. More importantly, though, the previous method for us doing this was an in-house test that we had developed, and it wasn't approved by the FDA, and therefore, it couldn't be billed through the insurance plans. What we then looked at is, if we change to this methodology, yes, it's a more expensive methodology to do this test, but it is FDA-approved, therefore, we can get reimbursement for it for our clients through insurance sources. So, it means typically, all of these are being billed out through insurance. It's not going to be a cost to the consumer, and we can actually get the revenue for it, rather than in some cases, not having a revenue source affixed to it. And then, lastly, for the public health lab, we're asking for four fee decreases. Again, part of this is due to an increase in testing volume. We've been really trying to look at who else we can serve provides those types of testing to. As we see more patients in the clinic, we do more testing, and the economies of scale have helped with that. And the next piece, of course, is looking at cost-saving measures for how we can change our process improvements. Just providing a graphical summary, again, with the exception of that very last item that I hate to have to bring, but the increase, everything else, we're looking at decreases for any of the existing fees within the public health lab. Overall, we had an average decrease of 41.5% across the lab fees this year. Very, very happy to see the lean process continuing to be successful for us and provide us, our customers, cheaper sources and options for lab services. Moving on to environmental health, as everyone knows with environmental health, they're charged with inspection of issuing health permits accordance with local and state regulations, and really are that pivotal piece for ensuring health and safety standards within our restaurants and communities within Tulare County. This year's request is for 10 new fees, two fee increases, and then we are trying to revise some descriptions of some of our fees to better conform with changes in regulation, and also provide better clarity for the actual people who are applying or having to pay those, those fees. For this first set of additions, the, we have a couple of different ones, and I'll try and go to each one just because I want to provide a little bit of context for it. The enforcement penalty fee is one that we're proposing to recover costs for issuing notices of violation to unpermitted vendors who are operating without health permits. Also, to permitted vendors who we go out and are operating outside of their permitted conditions, or responding to complaints and discovering that there were valid complaints. The idea here is, we're going out enforcing what is in policy, and we're adding something to be able to recoup the cost of having to go out and do that enforcement.
Sheriff, Ken, how many are we doing?
How many?
How many of those have we had to do without a penalty fee? So, are we doing one a month, five a month?
I look back to Nilsa, the environmental health manager, to come up and provide a little context for that one.
We get, we get at least 10 complaints a week regarding illegal vendors. So, staff is out every week, on the weekends, in the evenings, responding to illegal vendor complaints.
So, of the 10, how many would have been in the penalty phase?
Most of those complaints are found valid. Most of those complaints, they are operating without health permits. Some may have a health permit for prepackaged food, and they're actually doing full food prep and making tacos and selling all that stuff in the evenings and on the weekends.
Thank you. So, currently, you're not, you're basically doing all this for free?
Correct.
It's a pretty sizable stick.
It is.
Well, and that, I think that is the intent behind this, too, is clearly, it's been a problem for environmental health, and hopefully, by establishing fees, getting the word out that there is a penalty, that we can start to curb some of the practice.
However, it's a fee, not a penalty.
Technically, yeah. I mean, it...
These are the actual costs that we incur in doing this enforcement.
It is.
It's not that we're fee, we're charging a penalty to people. We're just, we're recovering our costs for the services that we provide.
You're, that is correct. Sorry, I misspoke. The next item is cottage food label review fee. And this came about a year and a half, two years ago. The cottage food program really came into existence. That allows people to really set up their home kitchen as an opportunity to make prepackaged food for sale at farmer's markets or through the internet locally. Areas like that, that is a great idea. As this has evolved, we've started to see some areas such as label reviews. Understandably, if you have recipes, you want to add new recipes throughout the year. That means having to go in, review that label, make sure that it's conforming with label guidelines from the feds and the state, that it's shelf-stable, not potentially hazardous to the end user. So, there is a cost associated with doing that. So, what we started to look at is, how do we make it a smaller level fee that really is just accounting for staff's time to come in and have to review those and make sure they conform. And we set that up as a per-hour basis. If it's less than an hour, it'll be charged at that prorated amount. Really, it's just establishing what our base rate is per hour. The baby food infant formula penalty, this... The baby food infant formula penalty, this came out of a, the Code of Federal Regulations, which is establishing a fee, or actually, this one establishes a penalty of ten dollars per day, per item sold within stores that are selling expired baby formula. The first question I had when I saw this was, does this mean now our environmental health staff are going to have to go out to all of the different businesses and literally start pulling stuff off the shelves? The answer is no. This is something that if they're going out for something else and it's discovered while there, or if they receive a complaint and go out investigate that complaint, that would be the trigger for this penalty. So it's, it would not be a new enforcement that we would be going out specifically trying to identify or address this on a continual basis.
Chair, how, here's my only concern with that. You know, do you get one strike? Three strikes? Do you get no strikes? You know, if you've, if you've found this, unless there's a state or federal law already saying you can't sell it by this date, or there's going to be a penalty, if that's in place, you know, that's okay. But if we're going to start enforcing, you know, this with a new penalty, there needs to be some kind of notification to business owners, because I, you know, maybe they do have people that stock, or that check their stock every day, or every five days, or every ten days. I can remember taking economics class in high school, and one of the field trips was go to the store and find the expired bread. Well, we were all excited when we reached around the very way back and found, you know, a loaf of bread that had been expired for a day, and we ran it up to the manager saying, "You're selling old bread." You know, so I mean, I just want to make sure that there's some kind of notification. If it's already implied because of that stamp on date, that's fine. I just want to, you know, make sure that, you know, we don't hit someone with a, you know, thousands of dollars penalty because they've got, you know, one package of formula sitting on their shelf that's, that expired, and they didn't know it.
I think that's an excellent point, and when we go back, we'll look at how we can probably get a mailer or some type of information notice out to retailers about, one, the Title 21 Code of Federal Regulation change, and assuming they're unaware, and let them know that if we're out for another action and it's discovered, or if somebody makes a complaint, then they could be subject to that penalty. The last item on this page is the CalCode Food Water System. What that's looking at is, we have some, some areas within the county where they're providing potable water at retail outlets. There are requirements for there being the well in place to be able to provide that water. We hadn't previously been recovering this cost because of changes with turning over the water system to CalWater. It's had a number of trickle effects through our, through our subsequent system, so. But this is really doing is asking that we add the hundred and eighty-three dollar fee, recover the cost of monitoring those wells at retail food and cottage food facilities that do not fall under the purview of Water Resources Control Board. We modeled this fee after other Central Valley communities do a similar type of fee, and this is how we modeled it after. We estimate at this point, there's only about ten facilities that would be falling under this category.
A question, Tim, because when I saw this, I was wondering about, you know, we are now using a lot of, as interim measures, water tanks. It's my understanding that we're requiring certified providers of certified waters to certify tanks, but we're not treating it as potable water. Is that a correct statement?
That is a correct statement.
However, I know that in many jurisdictions, the, this, these are deemed to be potable water supplies. So I remember years ago, being in Arizona, where water was, in some cases, very rare, and so they would build houses, and you had a tank, and however often, weekly or whatever, a truck came by and put water in your tank, and that's what they use for all purposes, potable included. My question really is, then, are we looking at that going forward? Because in some of these cases, it's going to be a while before these tanks are going to be replaced with wells of, I don't know when it's going to happen, because in many cases, these are people who are isolated, can't afford to put in a well, and so they've got this tank system. But we're limiting it to just basically non-potable purposes, which still requires a potable supply. So I'm curious, a little off-base here, but any, any, are we moving in that direction of looking at, making these, considering them potable supplies, and then what would be the implications for the county?
We've been really reticent on, on looking at those tanks as an actual potable supply because of the potential liability. Our, our concern is when that water, when we deliver that tank, we know it is a clean tank, it is free of any, any microbes. When we pull the water out of the sources that we're filling the tanks with, get it to the source, we know that the pH, we know the chlorination level. We, we know that there's nothing in that water. What we've found, though, is either, because the tanks can be opened by residents or contaminated subsequent to our delivery of that water, that's where we start to run into that gray area and concern that if, if it does sicken, in, in the family case, or in, in the retail food case, if it sickens a group of people, where the liability is if, if we've been a pass-through on providing the tank on the property, providing the water, and that, that's, that's really where we've been hung up on those potable tanks. I don't have the statistics in front of me, but offhand, I recall it was around three to five percent of our tanks, when we went back and did a subsequent test, we found some level of contaminants within that tank, which, that was a strong enough margin that it gave us some concern. Moving next to the, a couple of well permit amendments. These actually came from the, from APAC. When we went back and talked to them about what options are, in response to the drought, the continued failure of the number of wells, the continued well permits coming into environmental health, and in some cases, the length of time people are waiting to get a well drilled. When we engaged with the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee, it was about what, what additional steps might we take to help ease the burden and also help us environmental health administratively on this piece. The well permit amendment fee gives them the ability that if they get the initial permit, they make, they have to make subsequent changes, rather than do a new permit, here's an amendment fee. The comparison purpose is, we're looking at the ninety-two dollar amendment fee. If they were doing a new well, it's a hundred and ninety-three dollars for an individual or an ag well, or two hundred and forty-two dollars for a public or industrial well. So the idea there is it does provide a cost savings to them. There's still an administrative review piece to have to go out and look at the amendments. It's not as intense as the initial permit piece, so we looked at what our cost recoup would need to be for that. Similarly, the well extension fee, we have situations where things are, either the drillers can't get out within a year's period, or whatever the period of that initial permit, they're asking for an extension, or they know that their well might be close, it hasn't failed, they're not quite ready to go for the drilling yet, but to get the initial red tape done, they got the permit, and now they're just asking for the extension of it. So that's what that, the rationale behind doing the extension was. And lastly, the well inactivation fee was, I'm giving the applicant the ability to keep an existing well, making it inactive as opposed to actually filling the well to destroy it. The applicant must self-certify that the safety, environmental integrity of the well site is in order for that permit to be approved. Any questions on those series before I-
I do have a couple of questions. Um, one of the things that struck me, like a well permit extension, to me, that sounds like a tabletop exercise. I'm wondering why it costs ninety-two dollars to do that. I mean, so somebody writes a letter, and says, "I'm still trying to get my driller out here, I need an extension of one, one year for that." Why does it cost ninety-two dollars to say, "Yeah, you have your permit to your extension"?
I'm asking Nilsa, just so she can talk through the process.
As I do agree, it doesn't take long, it is less than an hour's work, but it does have to go through the review process. It still has to go to an OA to get entered into the system, so all of those minutes were accounted for. That's how we came up with the ninety-two.
Great, and then the other, the other question was on the well inactivation fee. Because I did that in my place, I had to drill a well, and I left my old well there because my expectation is that I expect the water table to come back up.
Right.
And then it would be more useful for me to use the older well, because I don't have to draw the water from such a depth, and it'd be less expensive, so it's inactive temporarily, but it's not like it's inactive indefinitely. So I'm kind of curious about how you, how do you treat that?
I found your first place to go and get the ninety-two bucks.
This is going forward, this is not going back.
So we're going to look at it every year. So basically, you as a property owner are going to have the ability to look at your system every year and decide, okay, do I want to continue with keeping this inactive? Is, is it going to become active? Am I going to need to destroy? And every year, you'll have that opportunity to look at your own system and decide where you want to go with it. At this point, we don't have a well inactivation fee available, so it's currently not an option. I think this is just going to give our property owners a little bit more options to look at their own systems and determine what they want to do with them.
Thanks.
My favorite nondescript fee on here was the notification to your operation, when I looked at it and said, "What?" So for clarification, that's a myriad of different operations, such as biosolids composting operations, research composting operations, emergency transfer processing operations, limited volume transfer operations, a lot of those types of smaller-scale operations, not large-scale, that, that fall within this category. So right now, the local enforcement agency hadn't been charging regulation of those facilities. However, the, there are quarterly inspections that are mandated within California Code of Regulations. So we are having to go out and actually do the inspections of these sites, make sure that there's no contamination issues, everything's contained. And so, given that, we are looking to establish a fee for these, for this type of activity. The last couple of items here are both with the dairies. These both are established as a result of state code and changes. The one antibiotic residue investigation is on-farm investigations for antibiotic residues. So that's when the inspector's going out, sometimes I'll go out on a Friday, take the samples, they get the results back the next day on a Saturday, have to go out and address any immediate issues right away. That's why that one's a little higher, because you could have overtime or unexpected hours for some of those, some of those evaluations. And then the last is a re-scoring, the re-score of a farm conducted after a score below the minimum legal requirements. It, there isn't a huge difference, you have a little bit, and maybe some staff cost save time, but they're still having to rerun pretty much all the same gamut of tests. And a lot of that fee is, is going to be factored into the cost of actually doing those tests. Lastly, on the actual fee dollar changes for environmental health, we have two items, an underground storage tank. We're just asking to increase the amount of the underground storage tanks. This established to cover permitting and inspection responsibilities for those tanks. The local agency does need to inspect those tanks at least once every year to determine whether it continues to comply with construction, monitoring, and testing requirements, and to ensure that the tank is, is stable and not, not contaminating the nearby ground. We're asking for a approximate twenty percent increase here, two hundred and forty-six dollars. As environmental health has really worked to much more fine-tune their fee methodology, identify where their cost drivers are, these are one of those areas that in the past were kind of the, the hidden bigger charges for the department, where we've been able to save and reduce fees elsewhere. This is one of those areas where we know we're still not one hundred percent cost recuperated, and we're trying to slowly build back to a level where we're, where we're comfortable with the cost recovery. The second one is cow dairy inspections. This has been discussed and accepted by the Creamery Association at this point already. The current fee had been a hundred and fifty dollars, we're asking to increase to the maximum of a hundred and ninety-two eighty. That maximum is established by California Department of Food and Ag. We pay twenty-five dollars or fifteen percent of that fee to Department of Food and Ag, and that's complying with regulations that they're then administering at the state level. That, by moving the fee to this level, and again, this goes back to our realignment of where our cost drivers are, this puts us at about eighty-five percent cost recovery for that program. And I note that because we are currently based on law at the top of what we can be legally charging. So we expect to be at eighty-five and continue at eighty-five, and look for ways that we can continue to, to bring costs down in that program.
Mr. Chair, just, just a quick comment, I, I think it's rather interesting that the State Department of Food and Ag is setting a fee, when they're based out of Sacramento, have nothing to do with this, and we have to send a portion of our inspection fee to them, adding to the cost of us doing business, when we're the number-one dairy county, and should be able to calculate our own costs and not have to send them anything. So it's just a very frustrating thing to me, and I, I just think it's very important that we're looking at this and always looking for ways to become more efficient and to decrease the cost, which will bring us towards, closer to cost recovery with our existing fees, and hopefully being able to decrease those fees going forward, because I feel like it's just, it's just an overall theme with fees in general, they just keep going up rather than looking for ways to bring them down. And I, I know that you've done a good job of doing that in certain areas. I just ask that that same philosophy be applied across the board, and it probably has, I just have to make that point.
Well, I, I, that is a very fair point to make with our environmental health. It's, it's been definitely a multi-year process to really pull apart each of the cost drivers within that program, look at how staff are assigned, what those duties are. And I feel like we're, we're getting really close to the point where we know exactly where those cost drivers are at, and we can bring those, start focusing in on these areas to bring costs down, and we'll continue to do that. Clearly, we are at the, at the top, I don't like to bring anything to the board and say we're at the top of anything for what we can charge. So from our perspective, any way that we can bring those costs down, we are evaluating that. And then, lastly, for environmental health, these are just description changes, again, as a result of either regulation or law changes that maybe define something a little differently, more narrowly, and also to provide better clarity for people who are trying to apply. If you have six different options of a retail food facility, where do I apply? We're trying to make it as user-friendly as possible while also meeting state regulation. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Chair, I have one last question.
Yes.
Are we creating any new positions with the new fees?
No.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Ask them already.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate it. You know, we, we're currently asking you guys to go back and look at your fees and, and make sure we're, at least recovering the majority of them if possible, and run this like a business. So thank you, guys, for-
So, thank you, guys, for all your hard work. It is public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the board on this issue may do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Approved by Supervisor Cox.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Worley. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number eight, the adjustments to planning and development fee schedule.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members, Mr. Spata, for Sims. Sophia Almanza, Assistant Director of Fiscal Services for Resource Management Agency. Today, I have the opportunity to present to you the fee adjustments to planning and development fee schedule for fiscal year 2016, 2017. This is just a brief overview of the presentation. I'm going to go over the review of each of the fee proposals. We're going to discuss the annual prorated fee increases, and we're going to discuss the proposed fee increases that are not prorated. I'm going to discuss the public outreach, acknowledgements, and requested action. So, this is the annual prorated fee increases. Last year, the board approved some prorated fee increases. So, this year, we would be the second year we're in those increases. So, I wanted to identify those separately. The second year of the five-year annual increases are for the notice of partial nonrenewal, which is increasing thirty dollars, the notice of full nonrenewal, which is increasing to twenty dollars, and the tentative parcel maps, which is increasing to a hundred dollars. And again, these are in the second year of the five-year phase. Also, in the second year of a four-year annual increase is a lot line adjustment for fifty dollars. This is the first year that we're requesting an increase for the setback variance, and this is going to be a five-year duration of ninety dollars.
And Sophia, that's an annual increase, so every year, it's going to go up fifty dollars, every year, it's going to go up ninety dollars?
That is exactly correct. So, these are the proposed fee increases that are not prorated. So, the certificate of compliance is going to increase to sixty-eight dollars. The extension of time for the special use permit, thirty dollars. Each of the extension of time will be increased to thirty dollars. The... I just would like to say, our agency went through a three-year review of all the planning and development fees. We looked at the hours, the staff time, the cost associated with processing each of those fees. Obviously, we're not at full cost recovery, but we're still trying to achieve some recovery for the agency while still being business-friendly. Obviously, that's the goal for the agency. We're promoting economic development through the reasonably phased fees. So, every year, we will review these. We will use the three-year analysis. It gives us a better view than just the one-year review, and that's something that continue to proceed with and implement. This is a wonderful busy table of all of the planning, project, processing fees. This identifies each of the fee types on the left-hand side, and then it also lists the existing fee, the proposed fee, and the percentage of increase for each fee. We're relatively staying low, again, going back to we're not going to be full cost recovery, but we're trying to recover as much as we can regarding the hours and times it spends to process each of those fees. And I've identified if the years are prorated, those number of years, and if they don't apply, and also the annual amount increased. So, this is all the fees that the resource management is requesting to be increased. So, for public outreach, we... The agency mailed letters to interested parties along with a draft copy of the agenda item and supporting materials. As of today, I've not received any public comment after our good faith efforts. We mailed flyers to Dairy Cares, the Farm Bureau Building Industry, Planning Industries, Engineering Associations, just a whole list of people. So, they've received that probably two weeks ago, and we haven't received a response yet. So, a little short, sweet presentation. Acknowledgements. I'd like to thank the board for always being very supportive, the CAO for being very supportive, County Auditor Controller. They did a wonderful job in going through my spreadsheet and reviewing my analysis. So, that was an enjoyable task. And also County Council. She was very thorough in helping me with the wording and how to present this in the agenda item today. Obviously, my resource management staff, my fiscal team, planning... Planners helped me greatly in this, and all the stakeholders that contacted and were involved. And with that, I have the requested action. I'm not going to read it because it's a lot of words. Remember, I like numbers. I respectfully request that RMA's recommendation of the agenda item is approved. I'd entertain any questions or comments.
I did have a question. I appreciate the process that we're going through of trying to spread these costs out over time so that it makes it easier for the folks to have to bear these costs. I was just wondering, do we continually look also at our neighboring jurisdictions to see what they charge for comparable services?
Yes, we do.
Because, I mean, to me, it's like an opportunity. If somebody's doing it for a whole lot less, you know, contact them, find out, what are you doing? How are you doing it? You know, to see whether or not there may be some applications here for Tulare County.
Yeah, we do continually do that, and we will continually do that. And sometimes across the board, it varies. So, really, we try to focus with Tulare County, and again, the number of hours and the number of hours involved that staff takes, but also the number of requests we get. Some jurisdictions might have many more requests in that specific area than we would.
Yeah, the economies of scale, as was brought up, you know, in our ag commissioner's situation are understandable. And I know there's our actual time spent, but when it comes to how we look at ways to be more, you know, efficient with what we're doing and maybe dropping out, and the RMA, of course, folks have kind of led the charge in this of how do we become more efficient in what we're doing. But it's a never-ending task. I mean, there's always opportunities. So, I just... I appreciate that we're doing that. I just wanted to hear that because I think that's very important. My concern is that I have seen jurisdictions who have huge impact fees, as an example, and I'm sure they can justify them based upon the time and efforts made by their employees. But at the end of the day, the question is, do you want to build anything? I mean, because if your costs are so great that everybody else is building someplace else because their fees are so much less, then we need to figure out a way to either bring our costs down or figure out how to get this done. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Great presentation. Let's open this. It is a public hearing, so let's open it up for anybody wishing to speak to this issue. May do so at this time.
Mr. Chairman, my name's John Hobbs. I am very well represented by Supervisor Vanderpool, and I reside in the city of Tulare. I just wanted to admit that I'm a little confused because if I understood the remarks of the staff member correctly, there was a claim made that somehow it's promoting economic development by charging development fees. And I don't see the correlation between promoting economic development and charging a fee. So, I... You know, I mean, otherwise, I couldn't argue with the presentation, but to stand and claim that somehow it promotes economic development to charge a development fee seems a little disingenuous to me.
I think if I can just respond to that quickly, Mr. Chairman. It kind of goes to my comment earlier before you came up, Mr. Hobbs. The situation is one of how do we... Fees are supposed to be predicated upon the idea that you're asking me as a citizen or an applicant to do something above and beyond what the general public expects from a county. And we are required to do this service for you, and we're allowed to recover the cost of doing that. Otherwise, what we're doing is making a gift of public funds to you. We're allowing... We're doing the work and services for you, the developer, to do something, and nobody else is getting that treatment. You should be paying for the services rendered. The question is, what are we charging for that service? So, that's why I asked the question. Are we comparing ourselves to other jurisdictions? To be user-friendly or development-friendly means your fees are lower than your competitors across the county line or the city line. For instance, we do not charge an impact fee. Yet, if you go to any city, I believe, with the exception of Exeter for housing, if you go to any city in Tulare County, you will find they charge an impact fee. Then there are also their school impact fees. Well, that's another matter. We have to charge that because the schools mandate that. But the point being, we try to be business-friendly by keeping our fees low, not high, because the higher the fees, the more likely your people who might want to invest in Tulare County are going to look elsewhere. So, the goal is to keep our fees down, reasonable, operate efficiently, so we don't blow up the fee cost, which then affects the ability of people to come here and invest in Tulare County.
And John, one thing that I think that Sophia mentioned in her presentation that tied the way that these fee increases are being implemented to economic growth was that they were being phased in, and it was these increases are happening over a period of time so that, you know, we know that this economic recovery has not been even throughout the state, for example, and the valley, the central valley tends to lag behind a little bit. And so, we don't want, you know, a huge fee increase to deter some project from being done. And so, rather than implementing the increase all at once to get to cost recovery, we're doing it over a period of time so that the impact is less and less, and that is an attempt to assist in economic development, I think is what she was saying.
Well, all of which is commendable. I... You know, I just... I have a problem with... And the fact that Tulare County is attempting to be a leader in keeping fees low is also commendable. I just don't think you ought to make a presentation that says it promotes economic development to charge a fee. I just... I think that's disingenuous. But apart from that, and I don't mean to be nitpicky, but... And if, you know, if the Builders Association isn't here saying the same thing, then perhaps I shouldn't have said it. But nevertheless, that was the only point I would make.
John, I think overall, you're probably correct the way it was presented, but RMA deals with a lot of businesses, and in business, time is money. And before, we were not very competitive, not because of fees, because of the time it took to complete those studies or approvals. And we've gotten to a position now to where we can respond very quickly, in fact, quicker than most counties in the state. So...
Cities in our county as well.
In the cities, but it's the concept times money. We just need to recover the cost.
I'm much better informed for having spouted off and spoken out of turn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and to the speaker. As the former RMA director, let me add to, number one, the magnitude of the fee, which was aptly described, the speed with which the service is provided, which is time is money in order to produce a return on investment faster for our business community. But I want to add one more factual point. You will notice that a great deal of that presentation focused on the extension of time for the benefit of the public. The extension of time is put on the planning commission agendas. And having served as staff to the planning commission for a number of years, I can tell you, planning commissioners will ask, have there been any changes in circumstances such that are there going to be any adverse environmental impacts to the public? That requires staff time. It requires an analysis to determine whether the environmental review for the original project now should be reactivated because of changed circumstances. That requires review, and it's in the best interest of the applicant to not have to do further environmental review, to amend their permits, and incur exorbitant fees. So, relatively speaking, this is the best bang for the buck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spata. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment.
Move Chairman. Move Rules Chairman.
Moved by Supervisor Worley, seconded by Supervisor Hushida. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number thirty-five, presentation on the two-year county wellness program and strategic action plan. Rhonda.
Good morning, Rhonda Schustrom, Human Resources Director. The item before you is an update on our two-year pilot program that we initiated in January of 2014. So, I will begin the presentation by, first of all, letting you know that while we'll be providing updates to you, we are asking... There are four requests today. Accept the presentation on the two-year county wellness program and strategic action plan for years 2014 and 15. Approve the 2016 wellness program. This is absent any new incentives that are covered or rebated back to the employees. Authorize the CAO and HRD director to approve employees' paid time off to participate in or attend specified wellness activities depending upon and subject to their department head approval. And these primarily are our biometric screenings and our onsite mammogram where we give employees time off to go and take those exams onsite. And fourth, direct HRD and CAO to research areas of interest or priorities of the board relating to wellness and health initiatives.
Rhonda, real quick, are those Mike Innes's tennis shoes that you put on the presentation?
I don't know. They look like basketball shoes to me, too. So, they could have been Sheriff Mike Pudro's. So, they're pretty clean, though. So, to begin our presentation, to take you back a couple of years, we had always had activities on health and wellness. We just didn't have them very strategically aligned or a regular plan in place. And so, we brought to you a proposal in December of 2013, which aligned our services based upon also our health claims data. And the concept was making it more targeted, so you're not just doing wonderful wellness activities, but trying to target them to our health claims. So, we took data from 2012 and provided there were five or six areas that we concentrated on. One was obesity, diabetes, cancer, arthritis, asthma, COPD, and heart disease. These were our top areas that we also had high claims on. Unfortunately, we were not able to get our data yet from our consultant on our 2015 numbers that we could bring to you today to compare. We're hoping to get that back to you to see if there were actual improvements. We do know, however, that we had high claims in 2015, and some of those related to the asthma, COPD, and diabetes. So, we know our claims have been higher in that employees have been going to their medical providers and are being diagnosed, and we hope they're being diagnosed earlier than later, and so that our wellness program has had an impact in terms of early intervention and prevention. We do have a figure that I thought was very... Surprisingly, very high, and that is we took a look at the number of touches or the number of activities that employees participated in, many of them more than one. And we... But then we looked at individual employees, and forty-six percent of our workforce has engaged in at least one activity over the last two years. That could be one of the health challenges. It could be one of the exams and screenings. It could have been Weight Watchers, but forty-six percent of our workforce. it could have been Weight Watchers, but forty-six percent of our workforce. So we did have a high amount of engagement with our employees through this program, and we hope to continue that. Our program was, I think, part of our success of our program has to do with the team that we have, and I want to give much credit to the HRD staff that have put this wellness program in place. And that is Loopy Garza, our Benefit and Wellness Manager, Kelly Barker, our Human Resources Analyst, and she'll be coming up and talking a little bit later, Myra Castor, who's a Benefit Specialist, Gail Rasmussen is not here, she's our other Benefit Specialist, and our newest employee, Amanda Waymire, HR Analyst. And she will be taking on the wellness program as Kelly Barker is shifted over to our recruitment side, so she can gain experience on that side. So we'll begin by having Loopy Garza present information on our wellness program, and I'll be back to the podium a little bit later with some, where we go from here.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spata, Mr. Sp- Mr. Sims. Sorry. My name is Loopy Garza. I'm the Benefit and Wellness Manager for Human Resources and Development. Today, I would like to provide you with an overview of the wellness activities that have taken place over the past two years and our recommendations going forward. In December 2013, you, your board approved our request for a two-year wellness pilot program. The goal, the goal was to make the workplace a healthier, happier environment for all and happy employees, meaning a better business overall. Accomplishing these goals is a collaborative effort by key personnel and departments, and requires a long-term commitment. By promoting health and wellness through education and initiatives, we hoped to support, encourage, and empower employees to make healthy choices in their lives and create long-term healthy habits which would contribute to their overall well-being. We feel that progress has been made in accomplishing these goals, but have only touched the surface. There is still work to be done, because wellness is not a one-time event, but a life-changing, a lifetime-changing event. In creating the program, our focus was to offer activities that would engage employees and encourage them to making healthier choices and changing poor behaviors. By implementing these healthy practices in their daily lives, in turn, it would carry over to their home lives and have a positive impact on their families as well. So this is the program that we presented in 2013. It consisted of monthly wellness initiatives. A health topic was selected for each month. The topic was based on the health risks from the insurance health claims, and we selected activities and educational information that would support these health topics. I know it's kind of small to read, but we began with this, monthly calendars. This is a sample calendar that we created in February as well as in March. And these calendars contained the health topic and activities that would take place during the month. The calendars were distributed through GroupWise email, through the GroupWise email system, and were distributed, distributed on the first day of each month. Our challenge has been reaching employees that don't have access to email or, or computer. So we began distributing copies of, hard copies of the calendars to the departments so that they can post in the work locations. The activities that were offered consisted of challenges, preventative health screenings, onsite classes, fitness classes, webinars, and educational information. Some of the challenges included Movember Challenge, The Walking Works, the SJVA two-hundred point challenge that was offered through Viveri, the former wellness, SJVA Wellness Provider. The numbers in red are the numbers of participants for 2014, and blue are from 2015. In summary, there were 2,262 employees that participated in these challenges. The health screenings included onsite biometric screenings, mammography screenings, glucose testing, blood pressure check, and flu shots that were offered at the health fair. The equivalent of 5,171 employees engaged in preventative activities over the course of the two years. This year, our mammography screenings took place earlier in the year, and a total of 179 employees participated, and out of those, out of those, 166 tests were normal, and thirteen required for the follow-up with their, with their healthcare practitioner.
Before we move, leave that screen. I have a question. Mr. Chairman, my mind. I noticed that we have solo health screenings, and that, that number was a new number, and there was a significant number there. And is that why we see the reduction in the other numbers, the glucose testing, dental scre- dental screening, blood pressure, and blood body mass index? Is there a correlation there?
The solo health screenings, if you recall, those were the machines that Anthem Blue Cross provided for, I think it was like four to five months. And there were two machines that were placed in various locations throughout the county. So employees were able to go in and check their blood pressure, their weight, their BMI, and give them several tests that they could, they could take on, at any time during the day. And so we did experience a high number of participants, because they were placed at Government Plaza, HRND, remember the other, the other locations, but those numbers were significant.
And that would, that does explain then why, if people were doing that, they would feel less inclined to go through the separate items of glucose testing, blood pressure, and that sort of thing, because they were getting that done. Okay.
Right. And with glucose, glucose testing, for example, those were, he had to fast to do that, that test. And that was offered at, at the health fair, so employees, some employees didn't want to fast until one o'clock in the afternoon to have the glucose, glucose tested.
That's another issue.
We also offered onsite fitness classes. The onsite fitness classes included yoga, Tai Chi, stretching, and biotherapy, which is, means therapeutic dancing, it's a form of zumba. And 399 employees participated in these classes. The other onsite classes were health coaching, Weight Watchers, a healthy cooking class, and financial, a financial wellness class, and mindful meditation was offered at the health fair as well. And we had approximately 438 employees that took part in these onsite classes. As Mr. Schustrom mentioned, we had, there were forty-six percent of the population of employees that engaged in at least one of these activities. In addition to the classes and to the screenings, we also offered, oh, sorry, went too far. We also offered webinars. The webinars were either live or pre-recorded, and the employees were able to view them from either their workstation or from their home computers. These are just some of the topics that we offered. I mean, there were numerous topics, because the topic was tied to the monthly initiative. With the exception of the Weight Watchers program, all of the initiatives were available free to employees. Some were only available to employees that were enrolled in the SJVA health plans, because they were funded through the claims of the SJVA plan. And our vendors that provided, there were vendors that provided and conducted some of these, some of these activities. So for example, Anthem Blue Cross, Anthem EAP did a lot of the onsite classes and webinars. Delta Team Care was also a former SJVA vendor that did a lot of the, that did the health, the health screenings, as well as onsite nutrition classes, the free cooking classes. Viveri was also a former SJVA wellness vendor. Kwea Delta Hospital, Weight Watchers, WebMD, and so on and so forth. I, we did have county employees that participated and that provided onsite classes, and I really would like to give them a special acknowledgement, because they donated countless hours towards this effort. So for example, Hannah Brady, who works in HHSA, she conducted the yoga classes over a two-month period. She did this on her time, and, and has also agreed to continue offering yoga classes in the future. Jimmy Yamakawa, who conducted the Tai Chi classes, both onsite as well as at our health fair, and Jimmy is now retired. Sylvia Hanna, she was the leader for the Weight Watchers program, but she also donated her time in helping us do the weigh-ins for the incentive program. And also, owners of Body Effect Wellness, Adam Hernandez and Adrian Otrega, they volunteered countless hours towards the onsite fitness classes. They did quite a number of classes for us, nutrition classes, as well as lead walks for the Walking Works Challenge. And last but not least, our wellness warriors. The wellness warriors were the wellness champions for the respective departments, and they helped promote and coordinate the wellness activities. We have approximately thirty representatives from, representing twenty-six departments. So the two-year pilot program also included incentives to encourage participation and health improvement. We, we began with the health risk assessments and biometric screenings. This was only available to employees that, that were enrolled in the SJVA health plans. The incentive consisted of fifty dollars for participation and a hundred and fifty dollars if they improved their health results over a period of twelve months. We also offered Weight Watchers, a Weight Watchers incentive. This was availa- this was available to all employees, all county employees. Employees had to complete a twelve-week program, and then they were refunded a hundred and fifty-six dollars, which was a full cost of the program. If they main- if those employees maintained their weight loss for twelve months, then they were eligible for an additional hundred-dollar incentive. And lastly, in 2015, SJVA also offered an incentive. Employees that participated in the biometric screenings and health evaluations received a fifty-dollar incentive in addition to the county one. And then also, employees that engaged in various wellness activities and earned 200 points by the end of 2015, they also received an additional fifty-dollar incentive. As far as the biometric screenings and health risk assessments, there were six hundred and ten employees that received, that participated and received the fifty-dollar incentive. Out of the six hundred and ten, 209 improved their results over twelve months. We still have some pending assessments to, to perform. Those that participated in 2015 and maintain, improved their, their results would be, will be eligible to earn another hundred and fifty-dollar incentive. That has not been, been scheduled yet, but we're estimating that 115 employees will have improved their score. So overall, for the health risk assessments, we would have paid out eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars for the incentive. As far as the Weight Watchers incentive, sorry, I have to drink some water. As far as the Weight Watchers incentive, there were 153 employees that completed the twelve-week program and were, and will reimburse the hundred and fifty-six dollars for the cost of the program. Twenty-seven of them maintained their weight loss for a period of twelve months. We still have some pending incentives to pay, and those were for employees that participated in 2015 that, and have maintained their, their weight loss for, during 2015 through 2016, will be eligible for an additional hundred-dollar incentive. And we're estimating that 20 employees will complete, and will maintain their weight loss and be paid that incentive. So overall, for the Weight Watchers incentive, we estimate that we would, we will pay nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars for the incentive. Overall, the incentive program that the county's paid out, we're estimating it to have, to be a hundred and seven, a little over a hundred and seven thousand dollars. As far as the SJVA wellness incentive, 430 employees participated in the health risk assessments and biometric screenings and received fifty-dollar incentive. And 155 employees met the 200-point challenge and were paid the incentive earlier this, this year as well. Twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars incentive was paid through the SJVA for this program. As Ms., as Ms. Schustrom mentioned, in developing the wellness program, we focused on activities that would address the health risks based on the claims data. The 212 claim, the 2012 claims data indicated that there was a high risk of obesity, diabetes, arthritis, cancer, heart disease, and asthma, COPD within our county population. Even though the two-year pilot program has concluded, we would like to continue with our wellness initiatives. Our plan was to provide an update on the comparison of the most recent claims data. However, we were unable to receive the final data from our consultant in time for this presentation, but we do expect to have the information within the coming weeks. I would like to mention that it generally takes two to five years for wellness programs to see the impact on the, on the health claims. The focus of our program was on the employee health risk factors based on the 2012, 2012 claims data, and we will continue to focus on those risk factors going forward. The following slides are pictures from the various activities that took place throughout the two years. This one is on the Pink Tuesday, which ta- which takes place county-wide on the second Tuesday of, in the month of October, and this is during the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This slide is Wear Red Day, which takes place in the month of February, and it raises awareness of women's heart health. The Movember Challenge has certainly been a very interesting event. To see employees transform from having no facial hair to a full-grown mustache or beard at the end in one month is just amazing. Most importantly, the active role that our male employees have taken in promoting men's health.
I think next year, I'd like to see Supervisor Van Der Poel up there.
I tried to escape photo during that month.
So next, Kelly Barker, our HR Analyst, will discuss the wellness program moving forward, and then Rhonda will close the, the presentation with the next phase of potential wellness program.
Good morning. We're looking forward ahead into 2016. We would like to continue our monthly wellness initiative with a different health topic each month, and continued SJVA-funded mammography screenings, the Weight Watchers at Work program, as well as webinars and varying onsite classes. In less than two weeks, County of Tulare will join together with several SJVA entities to launch our fifth annual Walking Works Challenge. The challenge will be a week-long, beginning on May 9th and ending on May 13th. Each employee that preregisters by April 29th will receive a pedometer donated by Anthem Blue Cross. We left a pedometer for each of the board members at the diocese. And Amanda Waymire also here has pedometers with her if there are any employees here that haven't received their pedometer yet. This challenge promotes walking and gets our employees moving all week long in a friendly competition. The employees will compete in three different categories, between departments, teams, and then of course, against Fresno County. SJVA will award a trophy to the county that has the highest participation, and a second trophy will be given to the county that has the highest average steps walked. Last year, in the participation category, Fresno County won with 25%, with County of Tulare not too far behind with 24%. In the number of average daily steps walked, County of Tulare won. The employees had a daily average of 8,734 steps walked. Pictured here, we have Deborah Puchigian and Pete Vanderpoel accepted the trophies for their respective counties. Which we have the trophy with us.
Have to get it back.
We received several pictures from employees within their teams from different county departments. Pictured here, we have several of the pictures from varying departments, fire, probation, county council, assessor's office, family support services, the resource management agency, and of course, Sheriff's Department. Throughout the two-year pilot program, we received several comments of praise, as well as some ideas and suggestions for the future of the program. Here are a few of the quotes that employees have given their consent for us to share. The first quote is from Kristy Rudolph from the Deputy Tax Collector's Office. "As a two-year and three-month breast cancer survivor, your encouragement for wellness gives me hope that my fellow coworkers and their families will be better informed on the risk and prevention of breast cancer. When I was first diagnosed and going to chemotherapy, I continued to work, and my coworkers in the Auditor Controller Tax Collector's Office, Assessor's Office, and the owners of Medina's would dress for..." of Medina's would dress for Pink Fridays. I still have pink striped paper around my cubicle and a Relay for Life donation can, can win someone wants to donate. We have lost many county employees to cancer, several in my department. Keep up the good work. It's encouraging to know that someone cares." Unfortunately, Kristy passed away last year, but it was important to her that others heard her story. This next quote came from Marcy McQuay from the Tulare Ag Commissioner's Office, who was diagnosed with cancer last year. "It is my hope that by sharing my story, others will say, be saved the pain that I am enduring now. Early diagnosis is imperative in order to begin treatment at the soonest possible date." Courtney LeBelle from the IT Department had this to say about our yoga classes that were donated by Hannah Brady. "I wanted to convey to you and the county how amazing these yoga classes and Hannah have been. The classes combined with another weekend class have helped me shave two inches off of my waist in the last two months. Seriously, it's amazing. Not only to feel, but to see the difference these classes are having on my figure, physical and mental health. I'm so thankful to the county and to Hannah for taking the time out of her schedule for offering these classes. And I hope that they continue to be offered." And the last quote is during both of the years that we offered the Weight Watchers meetings, we received this following quote from an employee from Tulare Works in Porterville. "I have enjoyed my time in Weight Watchers so much that I have decided to stay on and continue to the meetings. In fact, several of my friends who are teachers are, have joined recently. Thank you again for all of your efforts to make these options available to us. I know that it has not always been easy, so we truly appreciate your efforts." And now I'll go ahead and turn it over to Rhonda.
So we presented a proposal for 2016 activities, but in addition to those, other activities that we're looking at trying to bring to the county include biometric screenings, possibly onsite or through primary physicians. We are waiting to see what the SJVIA may be doing regarding biometric screenings this year. They had supported those last year, but we don't know if we'll be doing them in 2016. Implementing onsite preventative men's health screenings, such as PSA screenings, although there would be an associated cost to that. Focusing on employee health as a caregiver. With our aging population of employees and the boomers, many of our employees are becoming caregivers for their parents. And this, associated with this, there is health and mental health implications. And this is becoming a very national issue and specialty area on activities and prevention for caregivers. We are looking at implementing classes on family health and looking at reaching out to families. We've had many employees ask if they could bring their children or their spouses to activities. Implementing financial wellness is also paramount to looking at a holistic program of health and wellness. Implementing pet therapy activities. And just to disclose this, I did not add that. That was my staff that added the pet therapy activities.
Yeah, because they knew you needed it.
That's right. And I, I certainly support that. We have had, some departments are experimenting with bringing their, a pet to work day once a month. Inviting local health practitioners to actually come and conduct onsite classes versus webinars. And looking at onsite fitness classes that might have an employee fee associated with it. So far, the classes that we presented to you were all free and the time was donated by county employees and others. But it may be that in the future, we would offer the space but have a nominal fee or what's been discussed is a possible donation that the employee would make towards a nonprofit. So the wellness program moving forward, we want to move forward told, towards what we call total worker health. And at the bottom of this, of course, is compensation and benefits. And that has to do with health. But also, it's the integration of workplace intervention with activities in advance and employees' overall well-being on and off the job. Healthy, supporting workspace and environment, or eco-health, is an area of focus. And with some of the changes that are coming forward with space planning, provides us an opportunity to focus in this area. Worker safety hazards, exposure to threats is another area and priority that your board has focused on in recent years. Work-life management, and again, financial wellness are the areas we're looking at for a total worker health program. We were able to do this pilot project by utilizing a lot of, as I said, donated time and free services, by being very creative and targeting free services through webinars and allocating the staff, dedicating the staff to be able to focus their time on those efforts. And also because we had a special one-time funds through, that were left through the CSAC EIA program that we used to pay for the incentives for our program. It, we have spent approximately a hundred and seven thousand six hundred and sixty-eight of those dollars. We figure we'll have about nine thousand remaining. And we hope to use those towards offsetting the cost of our health fair, primarily the rental of the convention center this year. So those funds will be depleted. And that's why the proposal and the request is for activities that are absent any new incentives at this time. That concludes our formal presentation. If there are any questions, we'll be happy to take those.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I, I realize that we're taking away the financial incentives, which may have an impact on people's involvement. But one, one of the things that struck me is that when you looked at those risk factors, you know, really at the top of the list is obesity because so many of the other ones follow after, diabetes, heart conditions, arthritis, even cancer. Many things are tied to obesity. And I'm all for walking, but it's amazing when you do the math. How many steps it takes to burn off 500 calories? And yet we think nothing about picking up that 500 calorie candy bar and eating it. If we didn't eat that candy bar, it offsets an awful lot of, you know, in other words, the low-hanging fruit is affecting obesity from diet. It's much more cost-effective than almost anything else we can do, I believe. And so I, I would like for us to look at focusing on that more as a, because I think, again, it's just part of its education. You know, I mean, I think a lot of people think, well, boy, I want to get out there and walk. I want to lose weight. Well, one of the problems with exercise, it increases appetite. If we just respond with more eating because of our, of our increase, it's, I'm not, I'm all for exercise, don't get me wrong. But, but just recognizing that if we focus on, on diet and healthy eating, I think the return on investment can be really great. And again, I know we're not going to have funds to pay for this because there are a lot of programs out there and, and some of them cost money to, to participate in, but the, but not the principles that, that apply. And whether we could find people who could donate their time and effort towards that end or whatever, I don't know. But it seems like, and, and also, I guess, intervention. And I mean this in a very respectful way, but one of the things that's fairly visible about whether people have a physical issue is obesity. And so, you know, in a way that is respectful, encouraging, but you know, coming alongside people and saying, you know, can we, can we help you? Is there something we can do to help you understand how you can increase and improve your health by, by losing weight? And maybe it's, maybe it's like partnering up and saying, you know, hey, I'm, I need to lose a fifty pounds. You may need to lose a hundred pounds, but let's do this together type of a thing. And let's get on a, let's, let's work together to try to accomplish that. I really think that could be, there's no fantasy in this situation. But I do think it could be very, very helpful looking at the long-term, because we had a recent study that's talking about how many people are prediabetic in this country. And you can tie most of it back to diet, to being of obesity. So just as comment.
Your, your comments Supervisor Worthley, the partnering, that has been something with the Weight Watcher program where we've seen employees and peer, you know, peers have come together and gone to the Weight Watchers or ha, and we've seen success with that. We've seen success in my own office with that. Two individuals particularly who communicated on, on where they were with the program and have lost and have maintained that. And then I also had other employees who engaged in the Weight Watchers. And I know this was why we, when you looked at the numbers of how many actually maintain their weight loss, they weren't as high as we would like to see. The fact is that we did touch their life at some point, engage them in activity. And while they may not have gotten to that finish line, they're working towards it. And it's changing that behavior.
Mr. Chair, you know, just, just a few thoughts about the presentation. Thank you for bringing this item before the board in, in open session like this. I think that although this was a pilot program, I do think it's something that we need to continue. It, we used one-time monies. I understand that. But we just had an employee recognition ceremony today where we talked so much about our employees and, and how much they mean to us. And I, you know, I really do think that making sure that we help maintain a healthy workplace environment by setting examples, setting policies, priorities, that our workforce does matter. We want our workforce to be healthy. We can hopefully find some money, looking at Mike.
Guaranteed.
To, to see if there's a way that we can continue some of these incentives. Because like was pointed out in the presentation, like Steve said, that sometimes absent a financial incentive or absent some aspects that we did have included in our pilot program, we may not have the level of participation that we, we need to have, really have an impact. But I do think that our free efforts, our incentive-based efforts, any effort that we're exerting is yielding results. I think people are making changes in their lives and changing how they conduct themselves. And I know that we're in the process of looking at our wellness vendor contracts. And we're, we're trying to do as much as we can from a Board of Supervisors county-wide perspective to make this change. If it requires a hundred thousand dollars over a two-year period, I think it's worth it. Because I think that the, the productive work that we will get out of our employees from this program because of us undertaking it is a value that we can't even quantify yet. So I would just suggest that we continue this and take it beyond the, the pilot period using one-time funds.
Oh, I was just going to put a bear trap on my candy dish.
Well, no, I totally agree.
That's gonna hurt.
I totally agree that this is money well spent. Because what drives our costs up is claims. If we can keep our people from going to the doctor every time some little thing happens, if they're healthier, they're not going to be going to the doctor. They're not going to be putting those claims in. It's like driving your car down the road and you get four, five wrecks, six speeding tickets. Your insurance is going to go out of sight. So it's all tied.
You know from experience?
No, I don't know from experience. I'm just a good, fast, safe driver. But no, we, we all know that the thing that drives our costs up is claims. And if we can, you know, put some money out there and, and be proactive and help make everybody healthier, it's going to help us all. Mr. Sp, Mr. Sp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I would just like to say briefly that thank you, Rhonda and your team, for a very thorough, informative and professional presentation. In addition to helping to drive down medical costs, which is an important part of running government like a business, there is an added dimension. That is, your program, I am sure, is helping to extend longevity as well as to improve quality of life, which is a very humane part of what you do, for which you should be complimented. And to be sure, the CAO, working closely with the board, will endeavor to try to find appropriate funding to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I'd like to say that Supervisor Vanderpool would like to sign up for your zumba class if you can get him in.
We could, we, we offer if you want to teach it. We, we will be looking to, to see you walking out in the area with your pedometers on. And we will be probably issuing some challenges to Fresno County this Friday at our SJVIA meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhonda. Great presentation. I think this is an action item.
Mr. Chair, given the, the comments that were made and the CAO's commitment and the board's desire, I would gladly move for approval of the implementation of the 2016 wellness program.
Okay. Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool. Second by Supervisor Worthley. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thank you. Well, that concludes our open session. Do we have need for closed session council?
Yes, we do. Items A, B, and C are off calendar, but we will be going into closed sessions on items D, E, and F. And I do not expect an announcement out.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have an addendum on G as well?
Oh, and item G, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate you following on that wellness. I think that the wellness is very important.